Yeah, are you ready for me? Yeah, okay. So I'm Krista Baker, once again. We've been working on this splash pad potential grant application for a few months now. So I wasn't at the last meeting. I did get the recording sent to me. Lisa sent me the recording so I could watch and see what the conversation was about the splash pad. And the reason that we called this meeting was because we need to make sure that everyone has accurate information before we enter into this grant application. So in order for us, in order for CED to be able to go ahead, or the city of Julia to be able to go ahead and write or submit the grant application to Commerce, Commerce does need to see that this is a city project. It sounds like up to this point, there's, the city is saying, yes, it's okay to go ahead and, and apply for the grant, but it's not city-owned at all. Just upfront, Commerce is not going to offer them. So this has to be a city project. They're gonna want to see that Julia is taking the responsibility of the splash pad. It's gonna be owned and operated by the city, and that responsibility can't get placed back on the citizen's shoulders afterwards. The fundraising ahead of time, that's okay for the match that goes into the grant application, but afterwards, this, when Commerce awards funds, they award funds to the city of Julia. They can't give funds to Lisa Hapley or any one of the cities. So it does belong to Julia. There is going to be an expectation coming from Commerce that this does belong to the city. So we need to go ahead and make sure that that is upfront, that you have the information necessary, and that you know what you're entering into with this.
Well, I think we were all under the understanding that it wasn't gonna be up or operated, maintained by us. They never said that in the beginning. They just wanted us to show our support by giving them the opportunity for the land, but they never, when we asked, I think Mark asked a few times about the maintenance cost, and they said that they were gonna continue to fundraise for maintenance costs.
Right, so you were here for that meeting?
I was here for that one, yes.
The one two weeks ago, right?
Two weeks ago I was.
Okay, I wasn't here for that either. So the one before that, when you were here and I was here, and we were all discussing it, that's right. I mean, there was no funds that we were, they weren't asking for money, they weren't asking for maintenance, they weren't asking for anything, and you were here for that one.
Right, and that was also, this is my first splash pad application, my first grant. This was also me learning, and I had to take that information and what I saw here, take it back to Commerce and say, hey, what, what do I do with this? They said, you need to make sure that you educate the city as to what, what they're entering into. So this is just information providing, giving council the correct information so that you know what, what you're doing and what you're actually voting on.
So do other towns that get the splash pads, do they have grants too?
Potlatch, yes.
So their city owns their splash pads?
Yes, so I have been talking with the mayor of Potlatch quite a bit, and so that was a Potlatch, the city of Potlatch grant. It was the same community development block grant that helped pay for that one. So Potlatch has full responsibility for that splash pad. They decide when it, when it runs, they turn on the water, they turn off the water at the end of the day, they pay for the maintenance for it. They, in order to get the splash pad running, they found, they had a lot of city work go into it, and so it belongs to the city of Potlatch.
Well, to me, that part makes sense, but the fact that they, that they did tell us that they were going to maintain it and raise some money to, to pay for the chemicals or pay for whatever needed done, that, that part, I'm not, so.
Well, and I would be, and I don't know if we can do this, but I'd be more also wondering what the contribution match is before we decide.
I will say the same thing, they should be found first.
As well before we, you know, agree to all of this. So what is the, what are they asking for money-wise from us?
And that is one where I don't have the funds. Bonnie has been working on that, but I think as a city council member sitting here that she can't.
She's not a council, she's just a.
Yeah, looking as a city employee.
How much do they want from us as far as contribution match?
Approximately about seventy-five.
Hundred?
Thousand.
And where are we supposed to get the seventy-five thousand?
Well, we can get it from having people help like clear everything out of the area, a lot of community. We can get like Justin and Josh to help with the water, putting the water piping together and stuff like that, because they know where the lines are, you know, they do it for the city anyway. That, that we can use as like, I think it was twenty-nine seventy-five an hour for anybody that volunteers work to tear stuff down and everything, so that would be part of it.
Yeah.
And didn't you send some paperwork on that too?
Let me go ahead and I'll just move down to the second action item, so that Lisa can just talk through the bullet points that I have there. So the original quote, when Lisa and Casey were in here giving you that PowerPoint, the original quote, that was for over three hundred thousand, and that was for rain deck to cover and do deinstallation, do all of the construction work, do everything. We've now had them relook at that, the size of the splash pad, that was for a twenty-five hundred square foot one. They've now downsized that to about a fifteen hundred square foot one. So the quote price that we have total for that, if rain deck does everything, is two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-four dollars and ninety-three cents. The max grant award is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Grant administration, which is one thing that is required, they, you do need to have a grant administrator in order to, for Commerce to even look at the grant application, we would repay ten percent of that, whoever that grant administrator is. So Julia could get up to two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand awarded. So that does leave about sixty-six thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty. That would have to be either cash, so some of that could be cash, cash is king, is like what Dara always says, and it is viewed very favorably, so there does have to be some cash contribution. But some of that match can come in like vocal in-kind, so force account, when you have, say, your city workers going and doing some of the prep work, getting things prepared for that. It can also be, up to twenty-five percent of the construction can be volunteer work. So, so there is a certain amount of funds that does need to be, Commerce will never pay it for a hundred percent of the grant.
Have you had any of the businesses say that they're going to contribute any of their manpower hours for that?
No, not businesses, but I've had some people that are willing to volunteer their time. I know Julia Market, the owner of Julia Market, reached out to me, but he is gone this week. I wanted him to come tonight, that he wanted to donate some funds.
So.
To help sponsor it.
On this.
Has he mentioned how much?
Sorry, Nick. He just said he would like to talk to me about it, and he goes, but I'm gonna be gone, so.
Okay, what, Nick?
So on this twenty-nine seventy-five per hour, that's what the city has to, is that what the city pays Josh and Justin, or is that?
That's the, that's the Davis Bacon volunteer wages. So if we were gonna, we have to draft up like, you know, say we have, you know, twenty hours of volunteer labor, we would times twenty by that twenty-nine, what is it, twenty-nine-seventy-five, and that would be the amount of volunteer.
So Josh and Justin would be being paid by the city to do this?
That's considered force account.
Yeah.
Because they already work for the city, part of their time would just be dedicated to that. The city would still be paying their, their normal wages.
Either that, or they volunteer their time on weekends.
And how is that gonna affect their regular work hours when they're already set on what they do? I mean, how many hours are you expecting them to work on it?
I'm not, I'm, I'm not expecting them to, I don't know, I just was assuming weekends, you know, that they could help out on weekends, whatever.
Is that something that you would want to gain, Justin?
Well, we, I don't, I think Josh and I both agree that we would be interested in helping construct the splash pad, but I'm not sure we thought about doing it on weekends, but I mean, it could be during, it could be counted as part of our park work, you know, because we have a slot for, we have a budget for park work, so, you know, we could just spend a couple hours down there a week or whatever, clearing the space or pulling trees or just whatever, then that would get volunteered in-kind to the project. I think we'd just get paid our normal wage, but.
Also to the kids, I had talked to Kate, I think that's Kate. Anyway, I'm pretty sure it's Kate I was talking to, that they have a community, the kids work, the community did like clean up the park or the streets or whatever, and they, she said that that would be a good experience for them, too, is to volunteer to help with the splash pad area. I just don't understand, seventy-five thousand.
Right, and, I mean, I know that Lisa and, what's the other one's name, Lisa?
Casey.
Yeah, they were.
A hundred percent out of the board.
Well, and where, where, I'm just curious, it's why they're not here tonight showing their support.
Right, yeah.
And I think, I mean, I don't wanna speak for anyone, but I think they, just kinda going through the process, it's been like a four-month-long process, and I think they were a little frustrated that the city didn't seem to be backing them, and it was, the responsibility was then placed back on them.
Well, because they came to us and asked for property, they didn't come to ask and ask for money, they didn't come to us for anything else, they asked for property. We gave them the property, so.
And we showed our support by giving them the property.
Yeah, we showed them the support, we asked the right questions, we, you know, we gave them that, we.
Letting them use our.
I don't know, it wasn't supporting them.
What is that, five-oh?
Five-oh with CP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was what they said they, they needed, if they had needed to have that, yeah.
Yeah.
To get.
We even gave them the bank account for the splash pad. So I'm just kinda surprised that they're not, and I'm like, I'm with Wendy, I mean, seventy-five thousand, if that's what we got, even though we're gonna still match, but we're gonna be, I mean, taking man-hours away from, if we're getting ready to do construction on some of the streets, and if we, with our big sewer project.
Kind of a bad time, yeah.
Yeah, that's my concern.
I can put in another time. I mean, I've got all the equipment, I can rip that thing out, dig a hole, and the hole works.
If I knew what I could, seventy-five thousand would come from, I'd know.
The fairly grant application itself, I mean, we would need to submit, like, basically pledge letters, you know, maybe from businesses saying, we will donate this much money, making this, we don't actually need the money up hand, like upfront, other than the grant application fee.
And how much is that?
The thirty-five hundred.
Is the land included in the seventy-five thousand, would that be part of it?
No, because it's city-owned land, so.
So it can be part of the city's donation?
All right, it's already the city, the city's already applying for the grant, so.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
So where would the grant application come from? I mean, Bonnie, you looked at the budgets, if we're, if we can't get enough man-hours, we're gonna say that we have to, I know we're gonna come up with a new man-hour, but if we have to come up with sixty-six thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for, say, the worst-case scenario, where is that money gonna come from?
ARPA. ARPA covers, like, seventeen different things.
The truck.
No, it hasn't.
ARPA's covered part of the truck and the part of the sewer stuff that we have to pay for. So how much is the ARPA funds?
So I think we have like thirty.
Thousand?
Yes.
Left?
Yes.
So how much went to the truck, about a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand?
About a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
How much of the ARPA funds went to the truck?
So half of that, half of the, okay, because we get two halves. One whole half went to sewer, and then the other half went to that, the dirt.
I mean, I do need to look into that, I don't know if ARPA is actually considered a grant, since that's another grant.
So, yeah.
So I would need to make sure that that actually does count.
Right.
So we don't even know for sure we could use it? And if we could, we're still thirty-six thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty short?
And one of the, one of the things is you're, and there's gonna have to be a letter submitted saying if the funds aren't able to be raised, that the city does have the cash to back this. So that is one letter that does need to go into that grant application.
So we have to have a letter saying we have the cash to back it, not the man-hours to back it?
Right, what's your opinion?
Well, I just, I was just surprised at the different ways it's being presented now. I mean, and how we thought, because I've been talking to people in town, and everybody's in, you know, in favor of the splash pad.
I heard mixed.
The ones I talked to, they think it would be really good to have that, so I think, you know, I thought it would be a.
I mean, I thought it would be a good idea, I just.
I just didn't know that, I just think that right now, we've just got a lot going on, I don't know how, I don't know if we, I don't know if, if we can go so far, and then if it doesn't work, we can just back out and cancel the whole thing, or?
And that's basically what this meeting is for, and this, and the application has to be submitted.
But this is to go or not to go?
Yeah, this is, the application has to be submitted September nineteenth.
But we have to say that we're going to donate said money.
Right, so.
Otherwise, they're just wasting their time.
Yeah, if, if the money's there and we got this, I can go back to the office tomorrow and just start filling out everything and say, okay, this is good, we got this, and get this submitted in the next couple of weeks.
So, because I did get a sketch from CKA, so we, we have our sketch, didn't cost us anything, because they used to work for him, so they donated that.
What is that?
The sketch for, is part of the grant, also to its, the layout of the splash pad.
Oh, the sketch, I thought you said sketch, I was trying to figure.
I'm not sure we're saying that sketch.
I definitely didn't know, I didn't know what sketch was.
The design.
Sorry.
No, I know I talk fun, I know I talk fun.
It's the, all day, so.
I'm okay with it.
Or some time.
No, it's the sketch from CKA, and they donated it, they're also going to send a letter saying that, you know, it's like a thousand-dollar donation, because getting a draft done by an architect is not that much. I also talked to K, K and G Construction, who I know very well, and he's interested in doing it, and said he would, see what he could do about painting, that's a better deal, so.
Well, so that two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand is, you know, if rain deck comes in and just.
Just does it all.
But if you're able to figure out the construction pieces with, with other, I guess, sources of labor, that could, I mean, that price can fluctuate. The cost of the equipment itself was a hundred-and-eight thousand, I mean, that's just for the equipment, so if, if you are able to find, you know, other manpower to do everything else, volunteer-wise, or, you know.
Well, my concern.
Half that cost, if we, if we could just try and get at least half that cost, it would put us down to like eighty-some thousand, but it would cut our cost too on cash donation from seven, you know, like sixty-four thousand, or sixty-two, or whatever she said, to even.
Well, my concern is, having been seven years on the volunteer project at the library and it got no traction, and you're, the volunteers have already basically kind of not needed any to come tonight, so I'm afraid that it's gonna be Dick down there doing all of it, and then when Josh and Justin can fill in, I mean, so we're not really getting a lot of volunteer support. So I'm just concerned about the city taking on, you know, where's the volunteer support that it had two weeks ago? That's my concern with relying on volunteers. You know, that's why, I mean, I would like to know that we have all of that free and clear before I would say, because with, we don't know what's gonna happen with sewer stuff or our project, what is that? What's the sewer project thing, the, where they're scanning the pipes?
Oh, the.
Planning thing, what is that called?
Not a survey, a inspection.
Yeah.
Sewer inspection.
Sewer inspection. Because wasn't some of the ARPA funds going to, was that money considered into the, for the thirty thousand that we have left for the, that planning?
I thought that's what we said too, because we're gonna split up the Kendrick kind of part of it.
Right, well, no, no, that's the.
The sixty-four thousand for the sewer was, is being used for that little extra, so the seventy-five hundred is coming out of that sixty-four thousand.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
That we already designated last year.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that we have that seventy-five hundred.
It just seems like every meeting, we always mention the ARPA funds, so it's really hard to figure out where they're going and what they're coming out of.
Right.
What's your opinion, Mark?
I wanna thank my fellow council members for their wisdom and strong judgment and leadership, hard no.
I'm a hard no too. And Mark, why are you a hard no?
I was no all along, because I didn't feel like we were being given, I just kinda saw the workaround, that I didn't feel like the information was presented in a way that really was digestible, and I did, not that I saw what was gonna happen, but I compared it to people, that we were gonna end up at this point, where we're like, what, what just happened? And when I saw this come through, I was like, really? Truth is, I, I feel like this presentation would sabotage your, your intentions, because there's no way, I mean, it just went from, so that's just my opinion.
So do you think the splash pad is a no-go, or just the, the process right here?
Those are good questions. I think that the, I think you're gonna be pro splash pad, like, I would like to see a splash pad.
Yeah.
But I don't think I wanna pay for it, especially to this scale, and secondly, I don't think the public, we don't understand, I don't think the public understands what, how much this could potentially cost, and what the city obligation is, and I think the wisest thing said tonight was, look at all the projects we have lined up as it is.
I think if we could, if we could have a fundraiser, and, and then another year, see what's going on, then, you know, something would, not see that, if we had, if we had some more cushion behind this, I think.
Right.
Right, so I'm, I mean, I was pro splash pad, you know, and, and I was a little hesitant because it was made to sound like it was not going to completely fall on the city's shoulders, because we have all these projects.
Yeah.
And I mean, and I would like to see the splash pad, but I'm just concerned right now with the sewer project, the, all the roadwork that we're gonna chip ceiling and all that that we have to get done, the new truck is coming.
And it's all being dumped on us, I don't see any money fundraised from anybody so far.
Yeah, we don't even know how, do you know how much they've raised?
Eight hundred.
Dollars?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
To me, that's the public saying though.
But we have.
Well, I thought that Kendrick was.
We also haven't checked that any of the boxes that are at the stores, so, and stuff like that.
They're not gonna donate thirty thousand dollars?
No.
Did Kendrick donate? Did, because I thought Kendrick.
No, we just got the, the letter of support, once we got the, and Julia, Kendrick Recreational is not donating unless we, they know that the splash pad's gonna go through with the grant stuff. So a lot of people are waiting on the grant, so.
What about the, because I know the city of Potlatch showed their support as well.
Yes.
Did they donate?
Not yet.
It seems like everybody's just kind of, they're just waiting.
Well, I think they're waiting for the grant to go through, because nobody wants to hand over money, and then, you know, like, okay, so, like, I've been going to vendor shows and, and making money for the splash pad, I have all this money, if it doesn't go through and we never get a splash pad, what do I do with that money?
As I mentioned, when we submit the grant application, there's, there needs to be pledge letters, I will donate this much.
Right.
So it's a, it's a, it's a letter for.
But they won't do that until we get the grant, it's kinda like they're, you know, that's my opinion, is they're waiting on, if the grant goes through, that means, yes, this is gonna happen. You know, you can't just say, well, we need money, and then we're gonna do it, and then it doesn't happen, and then they're like, well, where's my money back? I want my money back.
Well, and I'm not, and I'm not saying, like, I'm, like I said, I'm pro splash pad, I don't, I figured this wouldn't be like a, hey, we're gonna do this, okay, now we're gonna do it right now, like, the library, we went at it seven years, you know, so I figured that this would be a couple years, a year.
And how many fundraisers have you guys done? A ton, every year?
A ton, and how many man-hours we've had, you know, doing the lives for the, and everything, so I figured that this would be not like a, we're gonna talk to you about it in July, and then we want you to pay for it in August, I thought they would go a little longer with their own fundraising, a year or so.
Bring us twenty-five thousand dollars and say, can you match us, or give us half or something?
Maybe we would be through some of our initial sewer projects and stuff, and have the truck here, make sure that everything's good with the truck, and our, some of our road construction, and I didn't anticipate it being two months later asking for sixty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's my concern. I mean, I'm not saying, no, I don't wanna splash that, I'm just saying.
No, I'm not donating money.
Yeah, and not, this year, I don't think is the year for us to be on the hook for that much, I mean.
And this isn't yearly.
I know that you're gonna do a lot of donating, but.
It's a yearly grant.
You can't do it all, I mean, I know you can do that, but you shouldn't have to do it all.
Yeah, you shouldn't have to.
We could have, we could have a fundraiser, and do two or three fundraisers or something.
Yeah, I mean, there's Christmas stuff.
And see my next year, and then you said you'd use.
Locust Blossom, Blackberry.
Yeah, it's the third, so every September is the third Monday of, the third Monday of every September this grant is due, so, I mean, if that's more comfortable for council too, I mean.
Well, I think that would be more, come ahead.
If it's a, if it's a decision for me tonight, I'd say no.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make a motion.
I don't think you have to make a motion.
No, we don't have to, because it was an action item.
Well, I mean, it's nobody.
To table, table it for a year, or whatever you wanna do, however you wanna do it, but we gotta answer something.
Well, if there is no, I don't know how that works, if there's no motion, then there's no action.
Yeah.
But we can table it for a year.
Yeah, I'm a big no, they'd have to bring some money back for me to even say yes.
And see where, I mean, to see where we're at with our projects in a year.
And.
While we can prepare for it, get it all over, get it all ready now.
We can get it pointed out.
Well, we've all said right now, there's nobody in the audience that was here last two months ago, yeah.
Well, except Justin Clifford.
Yeah, those two, but.
That's just Justin, they're always here.
Yeah.
And that's a big deal.
Yeah, I'm surprised that there aren't a lot of people.
It's just hard, because when you try to do fundraisers for that stuff, you're not gonna make thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in a year, I mean, like you said with your project or any other projects, people just don't donate that kind of money.
Right, well, but they just kinda did two months, and then we're.
I mean, and you've been hitting it hard, and I know you have, and you've done a lot, but you're still not coming up with a lot of money either.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they just need more time.
A lot more time.
And we need to be in a better spot with all of our projects going on, you know, because the truck's supposed to be here within a month, but there's still gonna be a few add-ons to the truck.
Well, if we have, if we still have that money out of the ARPA fund, and we have, and we need to use it for something else, and I'd rather do that than put it in for a splash pad.
Well, what happens, I mean.
Something that's related to the city that we can use it for.
Well, we should find out how our sewer system is with that. Is it planning, what is, what do they call that? A planning grant or something?
Well, it's a.
Where they go, because we did it for the signs, the road signs.
Oh, it was a transportation inspection survey.
Planning.
And so they're gonna do the same thing for our sewer lines, an inspection of all our sewer lines, and it will have the condition listed, and the material that it's made out of, and, you know.
Right.
Videos, probably.
So we know if there's areas that are gonna require some extra.
And then, then we have a list, just like the transportation list, you start at the top, you start attacking the hard, the worst stuff first, and like our paving, we're already on the second phase stuff, we've already kinda tackled the first phase, and then we're doing chip seal, and we're tackling the second phase, you know, the rest, the stuff that's not as important.
Well, should we move to table it for a year, and then we can, like, if we wanna start.
Well, if we can visit it, you know, talk about fundraising, and then we can visit it again in February or something, and see where your fundraising's at.
Start working towards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that might be something you can pass on to Lisa and.
Yeah, I mean, this is, yeah, we sit, I texted her, I said, I'm here for support.
Sure.
I mean, I've, I don't limit Julia, obviously, I'll have a splash pad, I would love to help with the process, but it, this is me just providing information to you all, so it really is, it's Julia's splash pad, you know, like I said, I'm here, the messenger providing info, that you need to make educated decisions. So, yeah, if there is, I mean, if there is support, and there's people who want to take us on, they should be the ones up here telling.
Well, I don't wanna let it fall on Bonnie, I mean, right now, I know that she's going Well, I don't wanna let all my money, I mean, right now, I know that she's going and doing all these functions, it's, I, one person can't handle this.
No, no, it was six of us on the library, and it was the same six or seven for seven years, and it was tough.
And with the amount of enthusiasm that it sounds like it's gonna have the city, I mean, it shouldn't be hard to find people to be dedicated to it, you know, especially if you give it the next year, you know.